At the Board of Education. I move that the Board of Education enter into closed session to discuss human resources matters as pursuant to Maryland Annotated Code General Provisions Article 3-305b1.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All the meeting to order as of... Oh, here's our pledge of allegiance. Very good. All meeting to order as of July 8th, 2020. Would you like to lead us in the pledge of flag? Word reflections.
The mission of the Cecil County Public Schools is to serve equitably through positive relationships as a safe collaborative community. We will ensure all learners acquire the knowledge, skills, and qualities to be responsible, caring, and ethical citizens.
We're going to adoption of the agenda. I move the Board of Education adopt the agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda has been adopted. Approval of the minutes. I move the Board of Education approve the minutes from June 10th. Open session meeting minutes as presented. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes administered. Public participation, there was no one at this point, right? Okay, fine, thank you. Board members' reports. Ms. Stevens.
Yes, so I... Obviously, there's not been a whole lot of activity here over the past month or so. This is the first in-person meeting that we've had in a while. And thus be awkward mask. I do want to commend Scott Hecker and his food services staff for the amazing work that they are continuing to do, feeding our students, preparing meals for those that do need them. I also want to commend an amazing group of volunteers that have banded together to deliver meals to those students who cannot make it to one of our pickup locations. As to date, there were over 300 meals twice a week being delivered to homes of students that were not otherwise able to get to a location. Many of these volunteers that I noticed were teachers. Trayvon Morgan was one of our Teachers of the Year, and he is helping to head up this amazing effort. And twice a week, these people are getting in their own vehicles and traipsing all around Cecil County, making sure that our students are fed. So it's been an amazing initiative to be a part of. And the food services staff is there to greet us every Monday, every Wednesday. They packaged everything for us, made it very efficient, very easy for us to grab what we need and go. The families are very grateful, so I just want to commend Scott and his staff, as well as the amazing volunteers in our community, that have really rallied together to support our students and their families. Finally, Kelsey, I just want to thank you for being a breath of fresh air on this board. You come bouncing in just about every Wednesday, full of energy, full of ideas. You are passionate, you are committed, and you are a true leader. I've seen you in action both here and with your work with the Drug Free Cecil Youth Coalition. Kelsey helped to coordinate and oversee the drug safety, the over-the-counter drug safety lesson for our sixth graders at North Bay, which has just been... It started off small, and it just kind of snowballed. The effort that Drug Free Cecil is doing now is in every high school, they're looking at expanding to middle schools, and this is all due to the work and dedication of this amazing young lady right here. So I am excited to see what you do next. As a member of the board, you represented the student body well, and I thank you for your passion, for your commitment, your hesitation to... You never hesitated to speak up when you had a question or an idea, and continue to do that, never be afraid to use your voice or to dim your light. So very, very proud of you. It was an honor to work with you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Mr. Fuzzin. Yes, so as Ms. Stevens shared, there isn't much going on. Just a general comment for local, state, and even federal leaders and officials. As we look to the 2021 school year, and we have concerns over the operational budget and the resources needed to provide school appropriately to students regardless of what the future holds, to be mindful that we're navigating some very uncharted waters, and the leadership team is working diligently to forge a path through, like I mentioned, uncharted territory. So it's essential that we have the support locally from the state and certainly from the federal government as well as we navigate the 2021 school year. I do also want to echo Ms. Stevens' comments and complimentary praise of Ms. Meese. We are incredibly honored to have served with you. We have learned a great deal from you. That breath of fresh air and that student perspective is incredibly valuable for folks who make decisions that impact over 15,000 young people in our schoolhouses on a regular basis. So thank you for your leadership. I look forward to seeing where your journey takes you going forward. So congratulations and thank you again.
Thank you. Ms. Hallen?
So as was mentioned, a lot of our work obviously deals with reentry and the many various issues surrounding that, the effects of the pandemic on education budget, and we continue to advocate for education funding. And to that end, I've attended a House Committee briefing and the National Education Association's Teletown Hall on ensuring equity and racial justice in reopening school buildings, which again is a very important topic. I've also participated statewide in the Maryland Association of Boards of Education Resolutions Committee. We finalized resolutions and the Legislative Committee meetings. And also continue to participate in the Reentry Steering Committee meetings, which I discussed a little bit last month, so I'm not going to get into any more of that. And information about that will be presented later in the meeting. And I too, Kelsey, also want to take a minute just to thank you. Kelsey is a very well-spoken, extremely, extremely active, true leader. She's like, she's like a little firecracker coming in here, I think Ms. Stevens used that word. But her positive energy, her smile, her contributions, she just, you never cease to amaze me really. And I think if you guys saw her speech at the county public budget hearing, it really just sums up the kind of person that she is. She's very impressive, kind, passionate, and just genuine, and she's not afraid to respectfully speak her mind. And really what I appreciate most too is she's really someone who puts words into action. She's really a type of person who practices what she preaches. She just doesn't preach it, she's out there doing it as well. So you will be missed, but I have no doubt that we will continue to see you, your work, your voice in the future, and that's a great thing. So keep it up. Thank you. Mr. Malisch?
Thank you. Let me first start off by thanking you very special. You know, people come up to me sometimes and say, "What's wrong with the kids today?" And I have to say, "You have not seen what I've seen." At the graduation, all the great things the kids are doing, and you certainly lead the way. You have done a wonderful job, and you still are with us next year, right? You are senior next year, right? So you are a future leader in this county, and you've done wonderful things for us. And the things that I've seen you do are the most important things because you're helping people. And that's what we're all about, people helping people, and you demonstrate that perfectly. All right? And the future's bright because of you and students like you. Basically, the things I've done, I've participated in multiple made things, but I want to take a moment, just a moment, to say that I've been in education probably 35 years, and this is the most challenging time I've ever seen. I started 550,000 soldiers in Vietnam, and families had their dads gone, some of their moms gone, and I've seen great economic times, terrible economic times, and riots. I was in National Guard in Baltimore, okay? I have never seen a time as complicated an education time as this. How do we take care of the parents, take care of the kids, take all these feelings we have because we're dealing with a pandemic that could hurt us and hurt our children and hurt our teachers and hurt our administration? And how we put all that together is very challenging. Dr. Lawson has been a great communicator. He sends all these surveys out, and the answers are all over the planet. We have such diversity in the feelings we have because it's emotional. It's about our children, or it's about our job, or it's about our daycare. Such a complicated situation. Taking care of the kids and not only getting them back to school, it's making sure mom and dad can make money and take care of the kids at home too. Opening the economy, very important. But the safety of the children is number one with me, and it's going to always have to be. And you're looking at a board here, we have 11 children among us, and a lot of them are still in the school system out there. That doesn't count, Dr. Lawson, two or three, I don't know. So we may have 15 here. So we're all about the kids, and we're all about the communities themselves, and we appreciate so much the kind of things you did on the surveys, thousands and thousands of responses. Do you know how many school systems send out surveys, and we get 25 responses back? There's nobody pays any attention. Well, everybody's paying a lot of attention now, and the community, you have to know we're with you. And the decisions that we make, if it's what your choice is or not what your choice is, you know we're there for you and we're going to help you go through it, all right? Tough times, are very interesting, very challenging times in the leadership position as well as in your positions. Dr. Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. Malisch. So Kelsey, I'm not going to say much now because if I say anything now, Agenda Item 4.05 is really kind of going to be ghosting in the... So I'll save my remarks to that without you. My report specifically to touch on what Mr. Malisch mentioned, we put out a survey, Ms. Keaton was a Thursday, late in the day Thursday, and within a matter of 72 hours, four days, we had just over 7,500 responses from students, from parents, and from staff. And as Mr. Malisch mentioned, we got quite the array and variety of answers. There isn't a clear consensus. I will correct myself. Maybe there is a clear consensus. The community seems to appreciate the amount of communication we're trying to provide as well as their broader trust. And I know I speak for the leadership team and the board, well, we take that, and we view that through a very humble lens. It's not the kind of situation where we will rest on our laurels. In fact, we will continue to just bombard people with communication. What's going on? This is where we are, and this is what our thinking is, and I think you'll see more of that later this evening when Ms. Gelrich leads a group that's going to share some of our work on the reentry plan as of right now. Some of the things I did, Tommy Scott, longtime lead custodian of Chesapeake City Elementary School, retired after 39 years, good for him. We had some little kind of smaller on-scale events for Georgia Clark, our Executive Director for elementary schools, who is now officially retired. And on that, I think it's appropriate that I welcome Dr. Jenny Hammer. Off to the side here is our new Executive Director for Elementary Education. Dr. Hammer has an outstanding reputation in the community for being a collaborator, for being somebody who likes to engage with the community, support our staff, support our students. So Jenny has a very bright future in this role, so we're really happy to have her. With that, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Okay. CCPS organization reports, Dr. Lawson.
At this time, given our new model of board meetings, if you will, Ms. Liz Orr, our administrative assistant to myself and to the board, will read comments from both Dr. Stuart Hutchison, the President of A&amp;S, as well as Ms. Lori Rinco, President of the Cecil County Classroom Teachers Association, correct, Ms. Orr?
Correct.
Give those to Ms. Orr.
So comments submitted by Dr. Hutchinson. "Good evening, Board President Malisch, Dr. Lawson, Board of Education members, leadership and guests. This evening, I'd like to share a few remarks with you regarding the reopening of schools. Over the next month, a decision regarding reopening schools will need to be made. As I've listened to national leaders weigh in on this subject, many have focused on what is happening now instead of what will happen over the course of 180 days. As a distance runner, I equate this to going on a long run without water or any sort of substance. I put my shoes on and head out the door, but neglect to think about how I will handle miles 20 through 26 when my body will be yearning for water and calories. Over the next month, I expect that national leaders will continue to focus on whether students should return to school in September. However, I would encourage everyone to shift their mindset to a model that we can sustain. We don't want to go out too fast only to find out that multiple students or staff have become sick and then have to shut down individual schools or the entire system. This would compromise our ability to reach the neediest students in our system and would interrupt the continuity of instruction. When we look at a model that we can sustain, some of the key questions that will have to be asked are: Will the model be able to continue with fluctuations in the number of COVID cases and the anticipated uptick in flu cases? I remember January of last year, wondering why there were so many students and teachers absent. Was it because of the flu or COVID? We don't know, but what I do know is that there were many days when we did not have a substitute. A hybrid model of learning would allow for teachers to help teachers who are sick. Will the model allow for choice? Not everyone will feel comfortable with sending their children back to school, but we still need to reach everyone. Will the model allow for us to reach the neediest students? While there are many questions to be asked, I believe the most important question to ask is whether the model is sustainable for 180 days. We have come a long way since March 16th, but I think we can all agree that the toughest part of the closure of schools was a lack of routine and continuity. With this in mind, let's continue to forge the path ahead with a sustainable reopening plan that can last 180 days." The next submission is from Lori Rinco, Triple CTA President. She writes, "Good evening, President Malisch, Dr. Lawson, members of the board, leadership team, and guests. Last month, I talked about the idea of our role as a CCPS family, the need of our family to support each other and to ensure that every member of our family is respected and treated equally and fairly. We need to listen and learn, to learn to understand others, and to have difficult conversations to address the racism and bigotry that still exists so that our family, our CCPS family, our schools, our students, our staff, and our community feel safe and supported regardless of race, gender, religion, sexual orientation, or place of birth. To further these goals, Triple CTA has started a book study and discussion group. Our first book selected by members is 'So You Want to Talk About Race?', and approximately 50 members will be participating in our first virtual board discussion meeting next week. Our multicultural affairs committee is leading this work and planning future workshops as well. Our members are also anxious and concerned about the return to school in the fall and what form that may take. With the serious threat of COVID and so much uncertainty and speculation, little guidance, and now a push that schools fully open in the fall under threat of removing federal funds, our educators are worried for the health and safety of their families, their students, and themselves. Our educators very much want to return to their schools, classrooms, and students and understand the toll that this absence is taking. However, this return can occur until science-based approved and recommended safety measures can be implemented with fidelity across the board for all schools, students, and staff, including testing, appropriate spacing and ventilation, providing required protective gear, and ensuring proper sanitation can and does occur in all settings. We want to return, but we need to ensure that it's done in a manner that maximizes everyone's health and safety first. We appreciate all the CCPS groups that have been meeting collaboratively to discuss the many facets of school reentry and know that this is an unparalleled time. We urge everyone to keep student and staff needs for health and safety as the top priority in our education mission."
Ms. Rinco did a wonderful job. She is a great representative for the teachers in Cecil County, and that goes right along with comments I made in closed session, a little bit about the possibility of adding a little racism component to every grade level's curriculum, and all that's going to be in consideration as we go forward. Dr. Lawson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Malisch. Just to round out some of the comments that have been made already about our outgoing student board member, Kelsey, I guess my message to you, Kelsey, would be, you know, I think what you've done and what you're doing in your time at Bohemian Manor High School and Cecil County Public Schools, you went to Cecilton, right? It is certainly top-notch. It's just, you know, it's great to see. And as a 59-year-old guy, kind of, Mr. Malisch touched on it a little bit, I think sometimes teenagers get a bad rap a little bit. There's just this sense of there's not a level of responsibility, social awareness, stick-to-itiveness, grit, and all those kinds of things, and I think you embody all that, and you're fortunate. And so my message to you will be to reflect on what you will do in the future. To, if you go away to school, come back, be a leader in this community. The community needs people like yourself, like Sophia, who's going to succeed you. We need people in this community to do those kinds of things. It will be the anchor of the community, and you might not see that now, but trust me, the board members up here, they know what I'm talking about with this. We will be relying on you when we're older and grayer and those kinds of things and look back. I remember when Kelsey was a student member, a board member. So thank you for your time, I've enjoyed it. You have my cell phone number. Reach out if you need things. I look forward to dialogue with you moving into next year. Next year's going to be difficult for all of us, and so I look forward to going back and forth with the Cecil County Council, Student Councils, as always, and thank you for everything.
May I say a few words?
Yes, may.
Okay. Yeah, so I am truly grateful that I was afforded the opportunity to be the CCPS student member of the board. But I'm not only grateful for the position itself, but also for the term, for the 2019 to 2020 term, because being a high schooler is already a whirlwind of adjustment and self-discovery and development. So being in high school through such uncertain times, it has reinforced definitely the importance of maintaining one's health and having compassion for others. And these are lessons that will carry us all through life. So I would like to thank everybody for their wonderful work, and as we said, we will all continue this because our service to the community, our commitment to this world, isn't really limited to one term. So thank you, everyone, and we'll be continuing great work. Thank you. I just wish I could give everybody a hug, but... Yep, a certificate is Kelsey's best friend, right?
Yes, Kelsey. That certificate still has not gotten my signature, it was under my computer, so before you go, let me sign it for you. Okay. Trying to match your personality, thanks to Ms. Orr.
Welcome, Sophia. I can't wait to see what you can do.
Okay, incoming student board member. Dr. Lawson, you want to introduce it?
Thank you. It's a pleasure for me to introduce to the board who you had the opportunity to have some dialogue with during closed session, Ms. Sophia Porter, who is a rising senior from Northeast High School, and she will be next year's board member, student board member. And welcome, Sophia. So is this a vote?
Oh, yes. All right. I move that the Cecil County Board of Education approve Ms. Sophia Porter. Sophia Porter is a 2021 student member of the Board of Education.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is your night. A chair awaits, I love it. Would you like to make a comment? You're welcome to do so if you wish. Press the button, green light comes on.
I just want to say thank you so much for trusting me with this position, and I can't wait to be a voice for all of my peers.
Thank you. Dr. Lawson, construction report seems so boring yet so exciting.
Thank you, Mr. Malisch. As the board can see, no offense, Mr. Willis. They clearly haven't seen your pictures.
There we go, okay.
As the board can see, Mr. Willis has prepared a construction report, again, for the last several months to highlight being the construction of the new Chesapeake City Elementary School. If you're able to bring up any of those pictures for the audience to see. Are there any questions about the progress of Chesapeake City or any of the documents that have been submitted by Mr. Willis?
I do have one question. So I'm sure that we're sticking to original plans, but has there been any talk about adjustments to, like, you know, involving social distancing, like, that are going to impact the construction of the school at all?
We're on target still. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Funding all good for this? Or everything been approved? Very good, okay. Reentry Plan Briefing, Dr. Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. Malisch. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Annie Gelrich, our Executive Director for Secondary School Education, to come forward. During this presentation, she will be assisted by Dr. Jenny Hammer, Dr. Joe Buckley, and Mr. Kyle Rickenthor is in the bullpen for technology issues as they may emerge. Before they get started, a couple of things I just want to say. As many of you know, we've had nearly 100 people who have a fingerprint on this somehow. We've had a lot of different voice come from different stakeholders, whether they're teachers, parents, students. We are trying to prepare the school system and prepare the community for virtually any scenario that could come within the next, I guess, what, seven weeks? As early as this morning, I was on a conference call with the State Superintendent. As you might guess, they are still a little bit up in the air. It's exactly what this is going to look like. This is now, this issue of opening schools in the fall has now started to emerge as a stronger voice in the national conversation, and so I think everybody needs to keep an eye on that. Just have my word that our perspective is that we will, our number one priority will be to keep our students and our staff safe, and we will do everything we can, and we think we're pretty well positioned. So when Ms. Gelrich begins, the first two slides, I just want to touch real quick on the survey. And again, the survey is open, we have 100 or so people watching this live online right now. If anybody in the audience hasn't taken it, please go on the state, on the system website and complete the survey. But without reading that to you, some of these numbers will give you a flavor. I'll refer you to the far-right preference returning to school. You can see for students, a little more than half want to go back all in person, 31% is a mix. So that's telling you that 85% of the students want to go back in some capacity, and with 15% showing some level of trepidation about returning at all. And keeping in mind, at 15% of roughly 2,000, that's 300 students, just out of that sample. So 2,000 out of 15,000, if you have 300, that's telling you that you probably have closer to, you know, 2,000 to 3,000 students system-wide who are really concerned about coming back at all. You can go to the next one. You can go to the next one. As I mentioned to the board in closed session, the leadership team, the board, were very proud of some of these numbers you see here in terms of, not so much have we taken the appropriate action, although we certainly want the community to support and to think that we're taking the appropriate action. But I think they are pleased with the sharing of information. They're very large numbers, and it's been very intentional to really bombard the community with opportunities to weigh in on the things we're doing, as well as have access. Our reentry stakeholder groups, all of their minutes are posted online for public view, so any person who wants to go on and see what's being talked about, the kind of ideas that are emerging, it's all certainly there. And we are humbled by the level of trust the community puts in us, and we certainly don't take that for granted. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Galrich.
Thank you, Dr. Lawson, members of the board, leadership team, and guests. So tonight, we want to give you an update on what we have, not decided, but talked about in our conversations. So our conversations are going to involve what instructional models make sense, what instructional platforms we've worked best, how can we best ensure students' staff safety, and probably forefront is equity. Equity across all kinds of levels, whether it's an IEP student or whether we're talking about poverty, we're talking about race, there's all kinds of equity issues that we continue to talk about. We have over 100 participants in six committees that operate underneath a steering committee led by Dr. Teigland. We have administrators, instructional coordinators, teachers, parents, and students. We had a very interesting student forum for the scheduling committee that gave us some really good insights into what students were thinking and how they felt about their education that they got in the spring and what they want for the fall. Both from the spring and as we move forward, we are looking at how can we, how can we best provide the education on online platform? How can we get every student a device so that it operates very well and that they're comfortable with running videos, uploading documents, interacting with their teacher? And that's really, that's another equity issue for us. We are working very hard that we have appropriate professional development that provides teachers and staff the skills that they need, especially as far as being an online educator and how you design that differently than you might be in the classroom. And then we are also looking at attendance and accountability processes. So these are the six committees that we had, and then, of course, there is a steering committee. The curriculum and instruction committee understands that the state is expecting us to teach to the Maryland common, or the Maryland standards. So we, that is forefront. When we decide on things that we're doing, we have to be sure that the Maryland standards are being taught. We have an online school, it's not, Edmentum is an online program that provides support for online learning. So there are several things that we have going with Edmentum. We have something called Exact Path, which is individualized. We also have CourseWare, which provides course information that we can upload into our own curriculum and use should we have to go totally virtual. There are some difficulties with Edmentum. We're looking for an elementary version that works very well, so we're still in the process of trying to find that. But Edmentum is what we're using now, and we think it's going to mesh very well with what we do. We have, the two platforms that we've decided on are Schoology and Google Classroom. And of course, as I've said before, we are looking at equity and access. We are looking at what attendance means, because if a student attends virtually but might not attend on the day that we're offering class, is that student present? And we want to be sure that students are counted for doing the work that they have to do, even though they might not be able to do it at the time that everybody else is doing it. And then grading is another consideration. We went to the passing completed secondary in the spring, but we want to go to, back to letter grades and have as normal a grading policy as we can have with a few tweaks to make sure that students are held accountable, but also they get appropriate feedback, because grades are more about feedback than whether they did the work or not.
I think it's important for me, for the board, to acknowledge that the grading piece last spring with what we saw from March through June really was not strong. And honestly, we have to do better going into September, moving forward in this piece. If in the event this kind of instructional model is going to sustain, we have to do a better job with assessments so that there can be some level of student accountability in terms of what's being learned. So we are very committed to trying to improve this area. There's been a lot of work done. We are really going to try to steer families away from packets and make sure as many students as we can, we have the devices, we need to get to the devices in the hands of students. If families have a hard time accessing the internet, we have purchased hotspots, so we're really going to make a concerted effort to make sure students and families are equipped with internet access so that we can access some of these online learning platforms and not rely on distribution of packets through the mail, which makes collecting of this, and the reason I bring that up is because the packets, that would require us collecting assessments, hard copies, and that's where a lot of the concern is in terms of, is it safe to ask our staff to do that? So if we can get everybody pushed into an online platform, it is certainly going to help our ability to provide assessments for students.
And the principals are trying to make contact with those families that had packets and to try to work through the difficulties that they might have with online learning, try to overcome those so that when we start in the fall, we have as many students as possible The next committee is the Scheduling and Summer School Committee. The first thing that this committee worked on was designing summer school, including when it would be, the structure of it, and what we would do. So for elementary, we have currently 473 students that are registered. Middle school has 193 students registered, and we have 88 high school students who are doing credit recovery. The middle and elementary schools are using Exact Path, and they have, these are the students that have teacher interaction, and those teachers will touch base with them once a week, twice a week, to make sure that they're comfortable with what they're doing and provide any support that they need to do. There is another group that is using Exact Path but without teacher support, because really with Exact Path, you don't need it. It's very intuitive, and with a parent helping a student get online, you log in with clever and you're there, and it's very explicit. So anybody who didn't get in, and not that, we didn't say nobody got in, but we had some late registrants and things like that, or people who just decide, maybe I'm interested in this, well, they have access to Exact Path, and that notification will be coming out from Ms. Keaton's office soon. We also, the instructional coordinators created a summer learning opportunities option. So if you didn't want to do summer school, but you wanted your student engaged in reading or math activities, gifted and talented activities, we had early childhood activities, that it just gives them options of things they can do that would be interesting but not structured like a summer school, one hour a day kind of thing. So that's what summer school looks like right now, and we kick it off on July 13th, and Mr. Rickensroot and Mr. Zimmerman have set up that very well. And then the schedule, we've looked at various options. We've looked at what we would do if we could get 25% of the students in, what we could do if we could get 50% of the students in, and there's a lot of options out there. So we've looked at them all, and we will take the input that we got from the committee as we go forward to make a decision about what we're going to do.
Ms. Galrich, I think it's important that the community, as they follow this, whether it's coming from state guidance or federal guidance, there's some code words, if you will, that are really going to drive a lot of the decisions that we make. If they maintain a social distancing of six feet, if that's a requirement, that starts to limit the amount of classroom space we can provide. If they limit the number of students that are on the bus, that starts to limit how many children we can bring to school on a particular day. So if we talk about bringing in half of our students at once, a quarter of our students at once, all of our students at once, those kinds of decisions will be predicated on the guidance that is put on us as it relates to issues such as social distancing and bus capacities.
Ms. Galrich, is that why the elementary school numbers are higher for summer school? Just because it's more for learning expansion?
Yeah. The summer school numbers for elementary are very high, are higher, because the high school numbers are mostly for credit recovery situations, which we don't have a lot of.
Gotcha.
Okay. So other things that, concerns about schedules that were brought up, a manageable course load, especially for our high school students. You know, if they have eight courses, we don't want them to get overwhelmed. So that's been discussion with high schools and middle schools especially. We want consistency in expectations, in the way information is presented, in how things are uploaded, and all those things, so that a student only has to learn one process. And of course, equity is key here, and then we also want to pay attention to what families need. We don't want to send half of one family's children to school on a different day than the other children. You know, we're constantly talking about childcare and how that meshes with what we're going to do. So that's a serious concern that we have, and we're continuing to work on it.
Thank you, Michelle.
Good evening, everyone. From a technology perspective, Dr. Lawson has already mentioned some of the work that has been done instructionally and with the infrastructure that we need to have to pull off a virtual learning environment for our students. So one of the main things is increased capacity. We have distributed over 5,000 devices to our students, as well as 200 hotspots to our students. Another thing that is happening, and I will give Mr. Rickensroot all of the credit with his vision, is there's been Wi-Fi extenders that have been purchased. Nine of them are going to be placed on buildings to, so that people can, students can access in areas where Wi-Fi is not readily available. So that should be very helpful for us. Another piece of this is professional development for these technology structures that we need to have in place. There is a course called Online Teaching in Cecil County that Mr. Rickensroot's department has put together, that every staff member in the district, as well as administrators, are taking this course. It provides direct instruction about online platforms, on those platforms, which is really interesting way to approach that learning, as well as online strategies. To date of our 1,400 employees, we have about 715 who, teachers and administrators who've already enrolled and are dabbling in the course, including me. So we are also, another thing that's really important for us, as we are reentering, we really have to make sure that our families are fully aware of how to operate the technology that we are presenting this information on. So discussion of a help desk is in place so that we are ensuring that if families need help with something, we're going to get that help to them. Principals are also, like we said, are considering ways to try to help those families that don't have access and were ghosting us and not available for us earlier in this, in the spring, and we're trying to help reconcile that with many of our families to try to keep off of the packets and get everybody online so we can learn together. So we also, there's a committee that is focused on special populations. This committee is supporting students with disabilities, as well as English language learners and students who receive gifted and talented services to ensure that their needs are being met. One, for instance, is the regulations and the laws behind implementation of IEPs have not changed. So we are still required to provide the same level of access to students, teachers, and related service providers. So we have to make sure that that continues as we move into the next school year. So these services are all being considered with this committee. Likewise, we've talked already about access in terms of equity and ensuring that when we are communicating to our families, we're doing it in a variety of ways to make sure we're not just sending emails to people, but we're also making phone calls, and we're doing things via paper if we need to, to send information out to families in an equitable way. All of this is going to require training with our staff, and that's very much a part of our online training in Cecil County, training that we're interacting with this summer. From a mental health and school safety perspective, Dr. Lawson shared that school safety of our students and staff is our first priority, and this committee is looking closely at mental health supports that we need to have in place. First of all, we've got to reacclimate our students to the building and to other human beings that we've been really apart from for over six months by the time we get back together. So we, that team is looking closely at how we're going to reacclimate students and our staff to the school setting with the rules that are now in place. Likewise, from a reactive perspective, we need to ensure that when students are calling for help, we have that help there for them and giving them access to those mental health supports. And from a proactive perspective, that our school counselors are providing programming to our students who are in need to ensure that they're getting the support that is there on an equitable basis. Student and staff safety, obviously, in effect right now, with personal protective equipment, social distancing, screening, that's happening right now. We're talking about protocols for nursing support. If a child gets sick in a building, what do we do? And finally, scheduling considerations. Open house is going to look different next year, folks. We're not going to have the same kind of situation where we may have in the past where we're doing large social gatherings, and all of these things are being weighed and decisions being made about how we handle those in the next school year.
Thank you, Dr. Lawson.
Good evening. I am up next with operations. Early on, we were in preparation mode. We were preparing for when we come back and we put a footprint back in our buildings, and we're now in a response mode where we are actually boots on the ground, taking care of these things that we planned for, while at the same time, still preparing and planning for when our students return, when our staff return, and what that's going to look like. Just today, the room that we're in right now, we had a meeting in here earlier. When that meeting ended, we set the room, we had everything prepared for how it was going to be structured this evening. We came in, we used one of the Protexis wand sprayers, electrostatic sprayer, and sanitized the entire room. So these things are occurring throughout our system, they're occurring throughout our buildings. All of our high-touch areas are being cleaned on a daily basis. We're working to minimize the interactions to the degree that we can, and when we do, we're operating under the social distancing protocols. Whenever you're moving up and down the hallways, or out of your office area or anything of that nature, we're asking people to put on masks as they go up and down the hallways. As this transitions into the start of the school year, it's going to look a little different. Depending upon what mode we come back in, whether that's face-to-face or virtual or hybrid of some sort or another, we will again be in response mode to what we are allowed to do. And the DOES side of the house has done a tremendous job and exerted a tremendous amount of energy in planning for what that will look like instructionally. On the operations side, and Mr. Willis and I used this term yesterday, we're a little more agile in terms of our ability to be able to respond much quicker, not that they, that the DOES side can, but it is a very cumbersome process on the instructional side of the house in terms of all the moving parts and pieces that they must accomplish. With operations, we see an issue, we go in, and we fix it, and we work that way. So we're much more agile in terms of being able to address that. Another area that we've looked at and we're focusing on is employee screening. So right now, at each of the entrances in this building, whenever anyone comes in, we're asking that they screen. There are a series of questions there that we ask that they check off on. Perfect example, I got an email the other morning at about 6:30. An employee came into a building, read through the questions, checked yes, and I said, wait a second. Immediately reached out, we were communicating with that employee, and we were immediately able to respond and address their concern or their question that they had. So this is a very fluid thing for us right now on the operations side of the house because it's live. So we're being very responsive to that. We're supporting all of our employees. We're continuing to work with that. We are following the CDC guidelines. Mr. Willis shared earlier, he had seen a news brief today, that the CDC guidelines are going to be either revised and removed guidelines, going to be coming out tomorrow or in the next 48 hours. So as soon as those hit the street, we will be tearing those apart and looking at what the implications are going to be for us. And if we need to adjust, if we need to change what we're going to do, we will do that. We are in constant communication with our Department of Health here in the county. It's almost like we have the old speed dial. Just for clarification, they reach out to us. Our Department of Emergency Services has been tremendous to work with, so the partnership that we have there prior to going into this was phenomenal, and it's just been enhanced now, but it's because of those relationships. But it's because of those relationships that it's a very open communication process. Transportation, as Dr. Lawson referred or referenced earlier, that's that's going to be an interesting one. And we're still waiting for what that will look like, and we're still waiting to see how we will be able to respond and support our families as we get underway again. And it's going to be dependent upon what what format we're in, what we are or are not allowed to do based upon guidelines that we receive. And it's one of those situations where we're prepared, we've talked about a lot of different scenarios, we know minimally what we believe we need to do to protect everyone. It's just going to be from that point moving forward, what, how can we enhance those kind of basic operations and procedures to then move forward? Guidelines, they're changing, and we're trying to remain remain on top of those and adjust as necessary. And I feel as though, you know, we've been responsive to our employees at this point to support their work and their needs, and we will continue to do so.
So before we, thank you, Dr. Buckley, before we open it up for questions, I just want to make two final points. The first being, you know, in hindsight, for me, the biggest learning takeaway has been the issue of equity. You know, and I guess as a working matter, I always knew we had a significant portion of our students who really count on us for a lot of different things, not just curriculum and certified teachers, but the social interaction, the the overall experiences that come with any kind of schooling. And when those children were pulled away from our school system and we started to reach out to families to find out how we could support it, support, it became very revealing just how many needed us. So we are committed to this idea of equity, of pursuing, working to provide students with every opportunity we can. Now, the second point, and this is the broader point, is that we are basically being asked to prepare for any one of the following. A routine opening of the school year, as we're all accustomed to, with 15,800 students come in, with 2,400 employees, and we hit the ground running on September 1st. We need to be prepared for that. We need to be prepared for an improved product than what we delivered last spring in the event we are fully online. We need to be prepared for that. We also need to be prepared for everything in the middle. That could be serving a quarter of our students a day, half of our students a day, and anything in between. And the commitment I'm making to the board, to the public, is that we are working every single day to address all of those possibilities. And I think we have a really strong product right now, and certainly we're open to critique, questions and comments at this time.
What what timeline are we looking at? When will we have a, I guess, guidance from the state on what is expected so that we can announce our our concrete plans? Do we have an ideal date in mind?
I would, I would suggest that it would come early in August, the very first part of August. Those comments, again, this is anecdotal, those comments have been pretty consistent coming from the state level, that we would see guidance emerge in very early August. Keep in mind, some counties in the state, I believe it's Howard County, their first student day is August 25th. And so, you know, I think the state feels the pressure as well. And today is July 8th. So and that's kind of where we are from a preparation perspective, is trying to prepare for really any one of five or six different scenarios.
Will each district make its own plan, or will the state be more specific about what they expect from each district?
I think there will be a set of non-negotiables that come from the state that require us to commit to, let's say, providing the Maryland Common Core and Career Readiness Standards. I don't think you'll, this is speculation, I don't think you'll see a model where Hartford County Public Schools is going to school five days a week with all their students as usual, and Cecil County is only an A B. I think there will be some level of parameters. Now, I'll say this, I would argue that that will be the likely approach initially. I could see scenarios start to emerge where pockets of hotspots start to emerge, where Cecilton Elementary School has a spike in cases, whether it's with students, whether it's with teachers, and so possibly that area. I would expect to start to see those kinds of things happening. But I think going into this, Ms. Stevens, I think it's the intention and the preference from state officials that we all come in in some level of uniformity in terms of reopening.
Then a follow-up to Ms. Stevens' question, once we have that information from the state, what does the turnaround time look like for parents who are asking, what will September, the week of September 1st look like in my house?
Yeah.
How quickly are we able to provide families with the information? I appreciate Ms. Gallowich's point about not breaking up families, you know, for the school day in the event we do have some sort of split.
Like an A B kind of thing, yeah. So the the State Department has has published what they're called a decision-making trait, and it talks about state responses in phase one, phase two, and phase three. For the first time I heard this morning that a phase three declaration in the state of Maryland doesn't necessarily mean a full reopening as we're used to. And I think there are many in the state who said, well, as soon as they declare Maryland is in phase three, schools are going to open as usual, maybe not so much all of a sudden. So I don't know how quickly or how directly that answers your question, but I think some of your question, the big issue with with the community are daycares. We are, we are hoping at this point, and I think this is a consensus across the state, that as schools start to open and become back to normal, so will daycares. Because obviously, we have 2,400 employees, many, most of them are parents with families, they have children of their own. We hear that. That's probably the most common thing we hear from our employees, is what am I going to do with my children? How are they? And I would argue that's some of the the difference you see in the data in the surveys, where parents are a little more likely to say, send the kids back. Because I think they're to the point where, and I love my three dearly, not that they're tired of them, but that they need to know where they're, because they have to work, let's face it. Pretty much every one of us in here has to go to work, and we need to know that our children are at school in a safe environment. So I do think you're going to see the the schools and the daycares kind of reopen together.
Well, parents have that information in mid-August, late August, as far as like, what does it look like at Smith Elementary School or Middle School, whatever happens to be the name of it.
I can tell you now that I think the team would agree with me, we could respond within a matter of a few days. We are that far along right now in our planning, that we are just waiting on a few pieces of information to come from from the state level. And once we know, that's when, and I think Dr. Buffy's point is a good one, that's when we know, okay, we can fit 24 on a bus at a time, well, then we're probably looking at an A B day, that kind of setup. So we can serve 50% of our students on one day and 50% of our students on a different day. But those kinds of little trigger pieces of information will be decision drivers just of the highest degree.
Well, I think the general public needs to understand that all of these committees that you saw here have parent participation. We have a lot of parents, and they're giving us input as we develop these plans, trying to feel the community out. And it's going to take a lot of cooperation among families. If my kids can't get taken care of, you can. You handle the kids for a couple of days a week. Neighbors have to work with neighbors, and it's going to be a together thing to survive this and get it through. I mean, the days of us coming in here as a board and saying, gee, did we let eighth grade take Algebra II next year are done. This is much more significant stuff, and this is stuff that's going to affect us every day, and we don't have complete control, because unfortunately, the virus is going to speak to us a little bit. We have to see what it does as well.
I also think there's, Mr. Mouse, I also think there's some real trepidation on the part of our staff, because it's pretty clear with the research now with this with this virus, it's much harder on adults, and the older the adult, the more likely it is to have complications. So that we are here, our core mission is to serve children. But I'd be remiss if I didn't have some sense of obligation for safety for our staff. Because if we're going to say to our 1,300 teachers, we expect you to come in every day for seven hours and to teach students with a mask on, and are we equipped from a safety perspective? So we certainly have our eye on that as well.
Just out of curiosity, because one of the things that I've been concerned about, MSD has been handed the question a few different ways as far as homeschooling and homeschooling numbers increasing. Do we have any idea that the requests or information about homeschooling students has increased? Of course, this has implications well beyond the 2021 school year, we're looking at September 30th enrollment counts, and that could certainly impact revenue streams moving forward. Has Cecil County seen an increase, or is it plateaued at homeschooling or even a drop?
So your original question is, have we seen any change in homeschooling based on what we've seen in these last few months? And right now, I think it's too early to say that. But I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be honest if I if I told you, we don't have our eye on that. We think we're putting together an absolute top-of-the-line online virtual experience for students, that any homeschool family would take a close look at and say, you know what, this is really good. Because regardless of what model they bring us back in, we're going to have a responsibility to serve students who are medically fragile, students who have pre-existing conditions that would make them much more susceptible to exposure. And so we have a responsibility to make sure they're getting a top-shelf product from the public school system. And so where I'm going here with this is that I think if any homeschool family would see the kind of product that we're developing, they would say, well, wait a minute, you mean I can enroll in Cecil County Public Schools and have access to this set of curriculum? It's going to be pretty appealing. And so, you know, directly, how much movement have we seen in the homeschool enrollment? I would argue it's probably early, but your real savvy homeschool families have to be looking at what we're doing and say, there might be an option right there.
Thank you.
I've dealt with students that have gone through multiple homeschooling situations, and sometimes they spend a lot of money buying them, and some of them are really not good. They just, they come to school when they're shocked how far behind their kids are because they homeschooled them for five years. And they said, but we've finished all these algebra courses, and they're failing basic math in eighth grade. So they have to be real careful about that. I know it's tempting, but again, it's a babysitting issue too. The kids are home doing that, are you working? Can we do that?
Mr. Mouse, I believe Ms. Porter has a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Here's our first one, pressure's on.
Absolutely. Here's me.
It's okay. So to follow Mr. Fazino's question, so you would be considering online learning to students who are at risk or uncomfortable with coming back?
Yes, is the short answer to that. Yes, I think we have to.
Okay.
And so we are preparing to do that, assuming that's something we will be required to do, we will be ready.
Okay. And I also wanted to ask if the, there was something about the help desk for teachers and families, would that help increase the teacher and student relationship through online learning?
So whose idea was the help desk?
Mr. Ricken's route.
Mr. Ricken's route addressed that one. I think it's a great idea, by the way.
Well, the help desk is really to help the parents when they have technical problems to call in. Our idea is to have it staffed by a few teachers that we pay for an extra pay after school kind of responsibilities, so that way, students, if they're struggling with technology, all right, how do I get here? What am I missing here? You know, I, this link isn't working. Or parents that are saying, this Chromebook is not functioning, you know, provide them some of that first line of support. And then if they can't answer it, then we hopefully are able to provide them like a deeper help line, maybe like the next day have a follow-up on the building. So it's more in lines of making sure that kids and parents can actually continue on with that online learning from there.
Okay. Because I know there were like a few students who had like a lack of teacher-student interaction. So I was just wondering if there were any plans to better that as well? And I mean, that sounds like it helps.
Well, it does. And what I would say is that, in fairness to everybody, on March 13th, we went out thinking we were going to be out two weeks, and we ended up being out several months. And frankly, as a school system, on a 1 to 10, how prepared were we from a technology perspective to do that? I would say we might have been at about a four or five, and that is higher than a lot of systems, and a lot of that credit goes to Mr. Mr. Ricken's route back here, our Director of Technology, and and the board, frankly, because we've been very aggressive purchasing technology over the years. We needed 5,000 loaner devices. Cecil County Public Schools had them to loan. Many systems didn't have them to loan out. And so we were pretty well poised, and in fairness to our teachers, I would argue maybe a third of the teachers were kind of on pace to deliver what I will call synchronistic learning. Synchronistic learning is when you are at home on a computer, and I'm here, and I'm teaching the computer, and you're there. That's synchronistic. Asynchronous is if I just give you work to do online. So I would say we were probably in a neighborhood of maybe 30% who were relatively comfortable with synchronistic learning. So my point is, is that we will be in a different place in September in terms of preparation to better serve the families.
The fact that we had computers when that all hit and all the school systems were desperate to find them, it was sort of like a toilet paper hunt, really. We were there, we were ahead of the game on it. So then this man here is truly a hero. The whole system goes, uh-oh, we're teaching online, and turn to him, and he's still here and has survived. Thank you so much.
I had a conversation just yesterday with a nearby superintendent who said, you know why you guys have done so well through this? Because of your Public Information Officer and your Director of Technology. And that is just, that couldn't be more true. Kelly Keaton, who's over here, Kyle's behind me, they have just been at the top of their game, and it's made us look so good as a public school system. So thank you publicly to both of you.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we tell everybody, you make some million years, and nobody starts stealing, right? Very good. Dr. Lawson, teach teacher appointments.
Bear with me, everybody, please.
Okay, excuse me. I recommend that the Board of Education of Cecil County approve the appointments of the teachers listed below for the 2020, 2021 school year.
You have heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a second?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion has passed unanimously. Dr. Lawson, teacher resignations.
I recommend that the Board of Education of Cecil County accept the resignations of the following teachers on the date specified.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion has passed unanimously. Dr. Lawson, teacher resignations.
I recommend that the Board of Education of Cecil County accept the resignations of the following teachers on the date specified.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation, have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Lawson, teacher resignations after a leave of absence.
Thank you, Mr. Malish. I recommend that the Board of Education of Cecil County accept the resignation for the following teacher on the date specified.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Lawson, authorization of the superintendent to make application for grants and assistance from the federal government.
I believe this motion must come from a board member.
Okay, very good. A motion on that?
I move that the Board of Education duly authorize Jeffrey A. Lawson, Superintendent of Schools, to file applications for assistance and grants from the federal government on behalf of the Board of Education of Cecil County. Its authorization specifically includes but is not limited to Title I, Title II, Teacher Quality, Title III, English Language Acquisition, IDEA Part B and C, Special Education, Perkins Career and Technology Education, National School Lunch Program. Being so authorized, he may take the representation and commitments required there and for and on behalf of said applicant, the Board of Education of Cecil County, and otherwise act as the authorized representative of the applicant for the 2021 school year as long as he officially remains in the capacity of Superintendent of Schools of Cecil County Public Schools.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion has passed. Contracted Single Source Plan Services Agreement, Dr. Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. Malish. I recommend that the Board of Education of Cecil County approve a contract to Johnson Controls for preventative maintenance, software, parts, and repairs for 30 sites totaling $321,270.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Lawson, intergovernmental bid for office supplies. Motion has passed.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve a new contract that staples advantage for school and office supplies with an estimated annual amount of $292,779.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. 416, physical year, 2020 budget updates, Dr. Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. Mouse. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Sandy Jack to share an operating budget amendment with the board. Ms. Jack.
Good evening, President Malish. Dr. Lawson, board members, chairs, and guests. So the first thing I want to point out, so so this is our preliminary June budget amendment because June 30 is our school year end. Because June 30 is our school year end, there will be a final budget amendment later on. The school year has ended, but we are still paying bills, paying some wages, and trying to make entries for our year. So in, under the restricted federal revenue, you'll see the year three of the N I J Project Assist Grant for $825,000, and then just below that, you'll see the Physical Year 20 Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Grant, which is also known as ESO. And this is part of the CARES funding. So we received $3.1 million. There, the board has access to another document that shows that grant was submitted, and the summary of what was submitted to the state is available for your review. We go to page two, which I normally skip. This is the unrestricted budget update for the year, and you'll see in the column all the way to the right in the expenditures by category, so down here, it's showing we have $2.4 million available. We are hoping to end the year with, in a positive note, I will caution that we do still have a lot of work yet to do, we still have a lot of invoices to pay, we're still paying non-FTE-type salaries, so workshops, that kind of thing. So that will change, but we are hoping that it will remain positive. And then if I go to page five, which I always review, there, there's really nothing new here to report that hasn't been going on all year. I just, again, will echo that fixed charges area, which a few months ago, prior to COVID, was not looking good, has actually come out positively.
It was in the $2 million unfavorable range there for a while.
And now it's about $800,000 favorable. So I can't help but think that's really, pretty much. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Jack?
You want to add?
We, and I'd asked Ms. Jack yesterday during our board prep, and she expects that the August, as a matter of fact, I think it's an agenda item for a fund balance designation. Yeah, so you'll have a handle on what, how FY '20 settle out in terms of fund balance usage, or maybe the other way, hopefully.
Is it also possible, and I'm just asking, thinking out loud here, if we could look at some of the potential cost-saving strategies? I'm thinking reduction in mileage, because we're leveraging web conferencing tools so people aren't congregating to a single space. I'm thinking about things like the budget we set aside for substitutes for curriculum writing, these things cannot be done in the evening because folks can remote into one another. But we kind of reflect on some of the practices where we've had to become creative over the past several months moving forward. Can we continue to leverage some of those same practices maybe to realize additional savings in the operating budget moving forward? Just a thought, you know, to take a look at where we found the technology and the interaction and the working remotely to be productive, and then how it's been impacting shape expenditures moving forward.
Yes, a lot of that has already been included, and you're correct, it can continue, which is a very good.
Yeah, we brought that up. We've talked.
It's been done before.
There's definitely practices that we've picked up during these last three or four months that will sustain.
Yeah, most definitely. I know that Drug for Cecil Youth Coalition, when we have meetings now, we also have the option to video, and so things like that, yes, I'm sure we'll continue on.
Thank you for your services this year.
Thank you.
Good job, new grounds.
Thank you.
Dr. Lawson.
Yes, I have a recommendation for that. I recommend that the Board of Education of Cecil County approve the operating budget amendment for $3,972,720 as presented.
Have a motion for superintendent's recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have completed the board meeting here, but I do need to say that I thank everybody for their flexibility, and remember, we are people-first community, and we have to take care of each other, and times are going to go good, some times are going to go bad, but hang in there, work together, and we're all going to get through this and continue to be the best school system in Cecil County. Thank you, the meeting is adjourned.